Meeting of Pennington County Planning Commission. Roll call. Everybody's here except Barb and Sig. I think Barb is gonna be here, but Sig is not. Approval of the November 23rd, 2015 minutes. Did everybody have a chance to read those? Are there any corrections or additions? If not, Chair would entertain a motion for approval.
I would so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the November 23rd Planning Commission meeting as written. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda. We have seven items, ooh, I'm sorry. Five items on the consent calendar and two, three, four, five, several that are not. Chair would entertain a motion for approval.
So, so.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved. Now, the consent calendar. For those of you in the audience, the following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. PJ, would you please read the first seven items into the consent, into the record, please?
Sure. PJ Conover, Director, Plan Department. Item number three, conditional use permit review 0236 for Homer Berger to review a caretaker's residence in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends to end CUP 0236. Item four, conditional use permit review 0925 for Steve Hobart to review a ranch hands residence in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue the review of CUP 0925 to the June 13th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. We'll actually be pulling that one later. Item number five, conditional use permit 1316 for Larry Tuber to review a guest house in a limited agriculture district and suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of CUP 1316 to the February 8th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item six, conditional use permit review 1327 for David and Nancy Fisher to review an accessory structure, which is a garage slash shop without a principal structure in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of CUP 1327 with seven conditions. Item seven, conditional use permit 1536 for Donald and Margaret Norton to review an existing shop building with living quarters to be used as a guest house on the subject property in low density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of CUP 1536 with nine conditions.
Thank you, PJ. Would any of the commissioners like to pull any of those items for discussion? Would staff like to pull any items for discussion?
Number four, please.
Number four. And would anyone in the audience like to pull any of those items for further discussion? Hearing none. Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
I would so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as read. Items three, five, six, and seven. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Onto item four.
Thank you.
Hi, Chitina.
Chitima Sabun, Plan 01. Staff would like to add the conditions to the continuation of conditional use permit CU 0925 because this, this conditional use permit has been reviewed and continued for a very, very long term.
Mm-hmm.
So, staff would like to ensure that the continuation next time has the, these conditions added.
So, what, can you explain what the additional condition is that you wish to add?
It's not an additional condition. In the agenda, it's just recommended to continue. So, we would like to continue it with conditions is what we would like to add. There's six of them that we would like to add with the con, approval of continuation. We would just like to make sure that the conditions get added in there, too.
Okay. I understand. Does everybody else understand? Yeah. Okay, so.
Pulling this for information, is that the notion?
No, in the agenda, at the beginning, it's in number four. Yeah, it says with, I'm sorry.
It's right here on page, it says no conditions if it's approved.
Right. On which page is that?
Seven.
Page seven of eight. It says in the last bullet point, right above the staff's recommendation, it says the agenda.
Oh, okay, okay.
Recommends continuation of conditional use permits CU 0925 with no conditions.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, they wanted to, just make sure, to clarify that if we continue this conditional use permit, that it will be continued with the six conditions that staff recommends. Okay. Thank you, Chitima. Anybody wanna offer a motion on this?
I recommend we continue conditional use permit CU 0925 with the six conditions per staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue conditional use permits CU 09-25 to the June 13th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting with six conditions. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Onto item eight.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor, Water Protection Coordinator. Item eight is a construction permit review CP 1501 for Keystone Adventures. The property is located after, off of Highway 16, Zone Highway Service District, and it consists of 20.09 acres. Currently, there is a conditional use permit on the property, CU 1423 for a golf driving range and helipad. The construction permit was issued in order to excavate and prep the site for the helipad. The review is basically to see what the status of, because we have had issues with the site being stabilized since the last Planning Commission meeting. Staff with the assistance of the, with the assistance of the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources has met with the property owners. We've had a conference call and staff has visited the site. And we feel that the property owners have done a good job of addressing our concerns, I'm trying to get to it, sorry, by seeding the site, adding straw, netting, putting perimeter controls in, and cleaning out the sediment basins. And I have also talked with the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, and they are in agreement that the property owners have made an effort to bring the site into compliance, and we're happy at this point with their, with their progress. So, staff is recommending approval of the extension of the construction permit with nine conditions.
Thank you, Brittany. Are there any questions for Brittany?
Yeah.
Yes, Lori.
You know, for something like this, now that it's winter, you, you probably won't go out there then until the spring, right? Or do you go out there monthly, or?
No, I probably won't go out for a couple weeks. I don't have any reason to.
Okay.
So.
I mean, unless you receive a complaint, or if there's like an abnormal amount of runoff or something like that.
Correct.
That would prompt inspection and, okay.
Correct. And I do feel that meeting with the property owners, that they have done a good job. They understand the inspections, they have been doing those. The state is comfortable, there's just some paperwork that needs to be submitted, but they didn't feel like it was something that would hold up their progress or anything. But, we do feel that the effort has been made to.
During this time of year, is the permit holder required to do some periodic inspections?
Yes, monthly.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Andrew Bussi, Keystone Adventures. Just wanna get everybody up to date on what's going on. We did have our FAA site inspection on Friday. Findings were favorable, expect a written report from them, probably no later than 2017. So, we're moving forward. We did receive our authorization from the FAA for the commercial heliport and the commercial operation, so that's moving forward. And we have stabilized the site, and in my personal opinion, there's more water, stormwater pollution prevention, BMPs in place on this site than any other site that I've seen in Pennington County. And we'll continue to do our monthly site inspections every month, and we'll resume construction March 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bussi. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to comment on this issue? Would anybody like to offer a motion?
I move that we recommend approval of construction permit CP 1501 with nine conditions per staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the extension of construction permit CP 15-01 with nine conditions as recommended by staff. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Bussi, for doing all that work. Thank you. Thanks, Brittany. Onto item nine.
Item nine is conditional use permit 1535 to allow a bird education and health facility in a general agriculture district. The applicant are Black Hills Raptor Center, the agent Ron Davis from Davis Engineering, property owner is Mark and Pam Kiefer, Kiefer, excuse me, and the size of the subject property is over 140 acres, but the size that we're concerned about is about 23.24 acres. Again, the applicant is looking to do a bird education and health facility on the subject property. This is an aerial view of the Kiefers' property. The requested use does not appear as a permitted or conditional use under any of our zoning districts, but the applicant is allowed through Section 204(c) under general district provisions to apply and request that a conditional use permit be heard. The parent parcel which you're looking at right now is 146 acres, currently zoned and taxed, general agriculture district. It's access off of Neck Hill Road. What we don't know about the subject property, though, or about the accesses, whether they have been approved previously or not, and that's something that staff can look into later if this is, is continued or approved. The owners of the property, again Pam and Mark Kiefer, they've agreed to lease a portion of the property, it's shown here, to Black Hills Raptor Center, and they submitted a letter to that fact, which is included in your staff reports. The portion of the property, this is approximate depiction of the portion that would be leased, it's by nowhere means, survey quality, I can guarantee you that. It's about 23-plus acres, this, leave a remainder of about 123 acres left on the, on the parent parcel. Black Hills Raptor Center is a 501(c)(3), has been around since 2010, and is conducted by all volunteer staff. It has a seven-person board of directors. They do about 125 to 150 educational programs a year in schools, youth programs within the general community, and they do special events. They submitted also a plan of operation, which was included with your staff reports. There are representatives from Black Hills Raptor Center in the audience today that would like to speak at a later time. The only thing that wasn't clear in the plan was how many people they planned on having on any, any given day. I spoke with the applicant, and she stated that we're about 60 people per day visiting, that's not including volunteers. On any maximum amount a day, they're looking at about 20 volunteers per day. The proposed structures on the property, this is a itemized list of what the applicant has submitted, and there's a visual also included in your packets, which shows what the property is projected to look like. The surrounding property going back a few slides, within a .5-mile radius, is surrounded by low density residential, limited agriculture, and general agriculture district. The future land use within .5 miles is low density residential and limited agriculture, and the surrounding land use is a mix of residential agriculture and vacant lots. This was routed through the departmental review. Couple items of importance came up. First was that Rapid City Community Planning and Services says this is in harmony with, in compliance with their city's future land use, and is inappropriate for the land area. Also, from our county water protection coordinator, because the amount of land that would be disturbed with the building permits, and this is, just shows you the elevation topo right here, the building permit will cover the dirtwork, but this is a considerable amount of dirtwork. And so, a construction permit will not be needed when they apply for a building permit, but the water protection coordinator has asked that, they just have a meeting with her prior, so that BMPs are put in for stormwater runoff. There are five factors that need to be considered when you're reviewing a conditional use permit. The first, that the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses already permitted, and upon property values within the immediate vicinity or not affected. Should not adversely affect the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate area. Again, most of the properties are low density residential, general agriculture, and limited agriculture. Staff is unable to determine if the approval of the Raptor Center and the construction of the Raptor Center will affect property values in the area. A letter of opposition was written and received by our office on December 2nd by Iris Richmond. She is in the off, audience today and would like to come up later and speak as well. That was included in your packet. The second thing to consider is that the effect upon normal and orderly development improvement of the surrounding vacant property for use will not be affected, and it should not negatively impact the normal and orderly development in the area. That the utilities, access roads, and drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. Access is off of Neck Road. Water is provided by the Pine Grove Water System, and future electrical connections or any need for onsite wastewater treatment will be addressed through the building permits. The fourth item is that off-road parking and loading requirements are met. There was nothing within Section 319 in our parking ordinance that covered this type of use. However, there was something close, which was commercial recreation use. Even though this is a non-commercial use done by a 501(c)(3), we figured this was probably the most applicable. That requirement is, for parking, is one per five customers computed on the basis of maximum servicing capacity at any one time, plus one additional space for every two people regularly employed on the premises. At this time, it's, again, all run by volunteers, that in the future, they're looking to have a caretaker's residence with a garage. So, our belief is that garage is gonna take care of the parking for that employed staff. Because the definition for commercial recreation use talks about regularly employed staff, we are gonna turn that a little bit and make it volunteered staff. So, we're looking at about 60 people per day for educational programs or special events, plus a maximum of 20 people for 20 volunteers. So, we do the math, we come up to about 22 parking spaces, which staff is gonna recommend be on the subject property, and including, in addition to enough room for a 45-foot school bus, which is kind of like their measure of area for vehicles to turn around, that at the time of building permit, all that have to be addressed, that there's enough safe ingress and egress for that bus. The applicant has, if I remember correctly, recommended somewhere between 15 or 20 to 25 parking spaces, so this 22 falls within their, their projections as well. Item number five, that the measures are taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibrations. Now, the proposal should not create a significant amount of fumes, dust, or vibrations, but does have the potential to produce odor and noise, and that the staff, the applicant should take reasonable measures so that the possible levers, levels of odor and noise do not become a nuisance, and if they are, it'll be addressed by our office. Couple last things. We did receive a letter from the Department of the Interior, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. They cannot send a letter of recommendation, but they did send the following, and I'll quote for the record. Unfortunately, we do not do letters of recommendation. However, I can state that in this email, that the Black Hills Raptor Center currently meets all the requirements pertaining to its current permit, and is in good standing with the Region 6 U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Magratory Bird Permit Office, and that is from Linda Downey. A copy of that was also included in your staff reports. In conclusion, again, this use is not listed under, as a permitted or conditional use under any of our zoning ordinances, or, yep, zoning ordinances. However, there is precedent that a similar request on 10.5 acres and limited agriculture was approved through a conditional use permit 0716. There was another permit that was similar to this in 2009, but that was ultimately withdrawn from, by the applicant. It appears that Black Hills Raptor Center is in compliance with all federal regulations, and the intended use appears to be in harmony with Pennington County's future land use zoning, and is in harmony with the City of Rapid City's future land use plan. Therefore, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1535 with 13 conditions.
Thank you, PJ.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions for PJ?
I have one.
Yes, Lori.
You said that there, there has been a user, a permit similar to this on limited ag on a 10-and-a-half acre parcel.
Correct.
And that was for what? You didn't say what it was for.
Oh, it was, the request was.
This isn't their request, is it?
Okay.
No, 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 no. I gotta find the exact.
Because I understood from the, from the packet that currently, these birds are housed in people's homes, right?
Yes, they're currently home in residence.
Okay.
Correct. The item that I mentioned, 0716, was for Wildlife Experiment to Review an Avian Center Bird Sanctuary in Limited Agriculture District.
So, it's another, it's another not-for-profit?
You know, there was nothing in the staff report that said that.
I think the guy can answer my question. He raised his hand, so. Thanks.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any more questions for PJ? Would the applicant like to make a statement?
Can I, just for my benefit, this is, this is off Highway 16 on the way to Keystone, right?
Yep, here, I'll show you here.
Because I, I saw the little chunk of the highway up there, and I think it says 16, right?
It's a ways down.
That map wasn't in it, in our packet, so.
Yeah, a lot of the presentation wasn't in the packet.
Yeah.
Yep, correct. I'm trying to find, yep, so there's.
Yeah, how far out of town is this?
Here's the mine, and this is like Independence Hall right up here.
Oh, okay, okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, the road that's heading off to the right is, goes off to Heart Ranch.
Okay. I thought that was.
Thank you.
Can you please identify yourselves through the record?
I'm John Halverson, co-founder of the Black Hills Raptor Center.
Good morning, I'm Maggie Engler. I'm the other co-founder of the Black Hills Raptor Center. Two things in Mr. Conover's statements that we would like to add to or clarify for you. Number one, the organization Wildlife Experiences is no longer in existence.
Okay.
It was, it was nullified by its Board of Directors back in 2010. And the organization that John and I created in 2010 basically is the, is the subsequent organization that's carrying on the work that that organization did.
Okay, and that was the organization for which the other conditional use permit was applied for, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
The other thing I'd like to try to clarify a little bit is about the numbers of people per day. I apparently did not do a good job of answering questions. When we talk about 60 people a day, we are talking about a school class coming to the site. A normal number of students in our region for kindergarten through fifth grade is 24 to 30. Two teachers would typically come together. That would be a situation where those people would be showing up for probably a half a day worth of programming. John and I do not envision that taking place for probably five to eight years. We need a goodly portion of time to continue to operate as we currently do, which is taking the birds that we work with to the schools. When we look at a number of people in and out of the facility on a daily basis for the next eight years, I think we're looking at more like four to eight, four volunteers in the morning to do the work that's needed to clean and care for the birds, to take care of maintenance, et cetera, four in the afternoon or the evening. So, just so that we're a little more accurate in terms of the numbers of people coming and going on the premises.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Halverson or Ms. Engler?
I have a question.
Yes, Jim.
So, we are not to expect large signs along Highway 16 trying to solicit people to come in.
Absolutely not. We are not creating a tourist event. We are not creating raptor gardens. We have said that from the very beginning, no. We are, this is more of a quiet thing out of the way. In fact, we kinda chose this location because it's off the main roads, it's off the tourist routes, and we want to maintain a private and quiet operation for the rehabilitation of injured raptors. As you know, birds of prey do not particularly like to hang around people. Noise and activity is counter to what we need to, to restore and heal these birds, particularly eagles, bald and golden falcons, and so on and so forth. They're stressed out by high population, high traffic. So, no, we're not creating raptor gardens.
Well, I, you just simply confirmed what I assumed would be the case, but I wanted to give you that opportunity.
Absolutely, thank you.
To emphasize that point, perhaps.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
You said that you guys, or a predecessor group of yours had that prior conditional use permit. Did you have a facility like this located on a ag property?
Did, a PJ, I guess, would have to address that. I don't know that they had a conditional use permit. I don't know that it was ever approved.
So, it was just a, it was just a proposal? He said one was withdrawn, and then one was approved, and maybe it was never built?
It was approved, 0716 was approved, reviewed, and then ultimately revoked.
Oh, revoked, okay. Revoked.
So, it was a similar one that was approved.
Okay.
But, the review was just basically to revoke it.
Not revoked because of a complaint, or just revoked because?
They never built?
Op, never operated.
Didn't need it.
Okay. Okay. They decided to go ahead and rehab the birds in homes, right? I'm guessing.
Actually, that organization was located on the grounds of Reptile Gardens. They, in, in the initial earliest days of that organization, they spawned off of Reptile Gardens and then created a nonprofit on that site. Reptile Gardens graciously hosted them, and they in turn provided the Birds of Prey program at Reptile Gardens for many, many years. Since that organization no longer exists, we are in no way related or organized with them. I'm not sure if this is anything that would be, continue to be germane to our application, but we're happy to answer any questions that we can.
About how many birds do you have at one time?
Right now, we have six education birds. Two hawks, one falcon, and three owls. We are looking at a full staff of educational raptors. Under our current permit, we are limited to 10 birds. We can apply for an additional addendum to that permit that allows us another additional 10 birds for a maximum of 20. However, since we're limiting ourselves to native birds of prey to South Dakota, there are only a subset of those that would work well in educational opportunities. Some of them are just too high-strung, or else we would have such difficulty manning these birds for programs that we will not have a full flight of 20. At any given time in the future, when we get our rehabilitation permit, because we do need to have this in order to do rehabilitation, we are looking at maximum number of birds in to be rehabilitated at any given time, maybe 12 or 15. On a really busy year, you might have up to 20 birds. Currently, we're seeing raptor rehab calls where we're called out to pick these birds up, about 65 and 70 per year.
Wow.
Maximum. That's what we're seeing now. However, because we do not do rehab, we do not advertise, so in the future, if we do have the, the rehabilitation up and running, we will be speaking more with law enforcement, game fish and parks, various veterinarian services through the area, that if somebody does get a call about a raptor, call us, we come, we deal with that. So, we could see upwards 100 to 110 birds over a total of a year.
Okay. And when do you think you might begin construction?
In the spring of 2016.
Okay. You guys have a capital campaign going?
Yes, ma'am.
And we do accept checks.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this issue? Yes, sir, first, what, would you like to start? Thank you.
I guess my question is, I live at the bottom of the hill.
Excuse me, sir, can you identify yourself for the record?
I'm Bill Texel, I live at the, on Neck Hill Road. I'd just like to know if you have an idea what the planned water usage is for this at maximum capacity, since it does affect my, my water.
You're well.
Thank you.
PJ, do you have an answer for that, or just, Mr. Halverson or Ms. Engler, do you have an answer about water usage?
I don't have an answer to that as proposed, and I guess Maggie's coming up.
Let me go this way. We honestly don't know. Our intention would be to tie into the Pine Grove Water System. We have been in contact with them, we understand what their requirements are, we understand that's a trickle feed system. We would install us, an underground cistern, because that seems to be more cost-effective than trying to drill a well, knowing what the bedrock is in the. because that seems to be more cost-effective than trying to drill a well, knowing what the bedrock is in the area. But in terms of a, of a gallon per day use, we are not that far in our planning.
Mr. Texel, does that answer your question well enough? Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Richmond?
Nice to meet you. I'm Elaine Richmond, and I wrote the letter originally, cause I had, like, one day to respond to a piece of paper. They've obviously had months of planning. I guess I put in there to deny their request for the conditional u- uh, use permit. I did meet with them over the weekend, and so to understand a little bit more about their operation. I guess what I would rather say now is, please address the concerns of the water. I have my own well, I don't know what the impact is gonna be on that. I, I have a concern about the equitability of the taxes when you have a five oh one C three, you know, do- We're paying a lot in taxes for our residential area. I just wanna see that be more equitable, so that people just can't create nonprofits and move into the area and not have to be responsible for taxes, for road improvements. I mean, it sounds like maybe they're not gonna have the Reptile Gardens tourist attraction that I thought they were gonna have. But to the point where they have to improve Neck Hill Road to support that, you know, does that fall on all the rest of the landowners? Maybe that's, you need to take into consideration what is their percentage of increase in traffic. Obviously, we want to limit the tourist access. I mean, I think they're doing it now, and in ten or fifteen years, maybe it doesn't matter, because it's more developed and stuff. So I just want to voice my concerns that these issues are addressed. And I know that personally, I am worried about the value of my property. A lot of my retirement funds are invested in my home. And in, you know, three to five years, I hope to be able to sell and downsize. So that is a big thing for me personally. Other than I just really like living in that area. It's beautiful, it's scenic, and I really don't wanna see that go downhill, even if I don't live there for the next twenty years like some people are gonna be. So that's what I have to say, I think, so.
Well, I, I do have to say that we don't have a lot to say about taxes-
I know.
At the planning and zoning department, you, we take that up with equalization.
I know, there, there's, in the government, there's a lot of people behind the scenes that know their, they know the business, they know the laws, and they know all those things. And I'm-
Right.
Going to rely on that fact that, that people are gonna do their work well, and really protect not just the organization that's coming in, but the landowners that are already there. I'm hoping that that part of the process will be upheld and, and address a lot of the other concerns, but.
I also think that, you know, I've, I've been on this board for several years, and these people are well-prepared. I mean, not only have they, um, done the work to get the appropriate tax, uh, you know, tax-free status as a five oh one C three, but it looks to me like they've done, um, pretty significant planning for this facility. Does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Richmond or comments?
I do. Um, do you guys have a road district in that area?
My, my parcel of property is not part of any of the group communities or group, like road groups or water groups. I'm a standalone property, and it's on its own. I mean, I don't have a group to help.
You have to maintain your own driveway and-
I have to maintain my own driveway, my own septic, my own water, my own propane tank. I mean, I'm, I'm pretty much on my own. So it does make a big impact if I have to adapt to any adverse things that go on.
Cause I think, is Neck Hill Road a county road?
I believe it is.
Does anyone know that? I think it is.
Yes, it's a county road.
It's a county road, I think.
The county plows it, right?
Yes, well, or DOT, I'm not sure who plows it, but they do.
Some governmental entity takes care of the road, yeah.
And I do know that in that area, when it becomes icy or really slippery, there is a slope there. And people, I see people sliding down right in front of my property, so it, you know, depending on whether they're gonna do a lot of things in the wintertime or not, it, it could have an impact on safety there, so.
And you are located, um, on the north side of this property, correct?
Oh, how do I describe it? You tell me.
Yep, well, I anticipated that question, so if you go straight up about twelve o'clock where it says ER. Elaine Richmond, that's her property.
Yeah.
Okay, right, on the other side of the road.
So it's that curve, yeah, that's right there. And it is, it curves up in the road, and then it kinda straightens up, and then it goes up and it curves some more, so. They do seem to have visibility from where the entrance to the property is now. I don't, they're, you know, they obviously will have to develop it to make sure that it's safe for people to pull off.
For their approach.
Yeah. I think I would be concerned long-term if I were gonna be there for the another, that you would have to put a stop sign in there, which I would hate, but that's just a personal thing. It doesn't have anything to do with laws and planning and, and all that stuff. A lot of it is emotional, you have to understand.
I absolutely get that.
Besides the financial impact, there's, there's some emotion there, too, so.
Right.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments for Ms. Richmond?
Uh, I just have one comment. I, I wanna applaud you for having thought this through, uh, in a rational and sensible fashion. Sometimes people-
I try.
And, and I'm glad that you communicated with these people, cause oftentimes folks show up here and they get all agitated, and lo and behold.
I was agitated.
Well, you weren't, yes. And your letter indicated that, but I-
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I appreciate your willingness to come up and, and mend fences here and, and make us realize that these kinda things, uh, this is what has to happen for this kinda stuff to work well.
And I don't, I don't disagree with their program at all, you have to understand. I love nature, I wouldn't be where I am. I love the deer, I love the turkeys. I just didn't wanna see it become a reptile gardens, cause it, it is a busy place, and if it's gonna become something like that, it needs to be where there's a road that accesses that kinda thing on a regular basis.
Right.
I'm glad I had the opportunity to meet with them. I was unsure about whether I should do that or not, but it helps me see the long-term idea of the use of the property, and I would like to see that, too. So I just, no, I live there, too, so it's, it's difficult-
May improve the value of your property.
Yeah, it may.
Well, it could. I mean, we, we don't know. I mean, even the staff report said, we don't know what that's gonna be, so. Anyway, so I just wanted to come and, and say, you know, my concerns, and say that I had met with them and talked through some things. And the staff report that I got this morning addressed some more for me, too, so.
Okay, well, you know, I have to say that change always happens, and-
It's tough.
It is tough. It's really difficult to see things happen in your neighborhood that you have no control over. But I'm thinking, you know, you could have way worse neighbors.
And I agree, and I, like I said, I agree with what they're trying to accomplish, and as long as it's not a negative impact, then I, I'm, I would be for it.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Or ma'am, come forward. Sir? Can you, uh, give us your name, please, for the record?
My name is Pam Kiefer. We own the land that the Raptor Center is building. Uh, there are structures for their birds on. And our intent with the land is that it becomes an educational learning center for young people. So that young people from different schools, and it should start out with South Dakota, will come to this area and learn about, in this case, raptors, and see what types of native grasses we have there, what types of weeds. We intend to use this property for cattle, as we always have in the past. We're not gonna change that, because we need land to graze our cattle upon. So the idea behind the Raptor Center, I think, is a good one, to further our purpose for the land in agriculture, as well as learning centers for young people, instead of just clicking away on their computers, that they can come out and enjoy native areas. And, um, Ms. Richmond, you can imagine how I felt when we had this land and across from us, there was nothing. And now we have people living there, which I don't think is a pretty sight. So I would just as soon keep it all native, and that if you wanna build housing units, build them closer to town. But that's not the case either. Change does happen, and I've never been involved in refuting what you have done in any way.
Can you please address your comments to the, to the chair here?
I've never been involved in refuting what the landowners on the other side of the road have done. I've never said anything about that, and so I think that this is a good way to use the land, and actually, the birds don't take up much space. And the idea behind the Raptor Center, I think, is a grand idea. So I wanna see it continue, and it's certainly a better option than developing that area and put housing units in there. So I wanna see this continue. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Kiefer? Sir, did you have comments?
Yes, I'm Val Manus, and I own a lot just to the northwest of where they would be putting the center. And I'm just concerned about, you know, even if it starts small, as they grow, the no- there will be noise. You know, you bring in a busload of kids, there will be noise. And we bought that area to be a quiet retirement home.
Can you show us, uh, PJ, do you know which lot is Mr. Manus's?
I don't know, does the pen here work?
So this empty one right here?
Yeah, right there.
Oh, okay. So you would be a close neighbor?
Yeah, be very close to where their entrance would be, to where their facility would be. So it is that potential for future traffic, future noise, that, uh, does make me have reservations about this, very strong reservations about it. I agree with their, in principle, what they do, it's a good thing, and the education is good. I'm an educator, so I definitely wanna see kids learn better stuff. But here's one of those cases where, even though I don't like it, I'm one of those not in my backyard. You know, I hate, I hate that, I hate that, but I have to express that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Manus or comments? Anybody else? Yes. Mr. Halverson?
One of the, one of the things that I continually see being brought up is a concern about high traffic and noise and such. Uh, I just wanna reinforce again that a vast and overwhelming majority of our activity is going to be off-site. If you have ever worked with kids, you know, getting them onto a school bus to take them somewhere is very much akin to herding cats. So programs are going to be off-site most of the time. And what few programs we do have coming out to us will be fairly limited. There'll quite often be spring trips. But I'm not foreseeing more than ten or twelve per year total. And again, with concerns of noise, I gotta agree, I don't want a lot of shouting and screaming kids around birds that are being rehabilitated. So we will be riding herd on any group of kids there. You will need to stay quiet, we're not here to scare the birds, we're here to see the bird. So again, it's going to be quiet. We're not planning any rock concerts, and we definitely are not putting in a, an artillery range or anything noisy like that. We want the quiet for the rehabilitation of the birds, which, again, this is why we were so happy to see this piece of property being offered to us, because of the quiet. And we need to maintain that quiet, just as they have picked their homes for the quiet. So we're, we're kinda in accordance on that, and their concerns, while valid, I don't think they're gonna have any problems with this in the future.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Halverson? Thank you. Is there further discussion? If not, PJ, Brittany?
Sorry, Brittany Molliter again. I just wanted to address some of the water concerns that they had. Any of the permitting would have to go through DENR, whether they get the well for the use. And as far as the Pine Grove Water District, they would have to ensure that they had adequate capacity to serve that. So that would all be addressed through DENR, so if they have those questions, um, to talk to the state. So I just wanted to give them that opportunity or that information.
Neighbors, did you, everybody hear that? Okay. Yes, PJ?
Couple of quick things that are addressed as, uh, conditions that were brought up earlier. In condition number four, there's a list of the structures that can be done in their square footage, and in the very last sentence is, "Any expansion beyond the allowed use will require review of this conditional use permit." So that would require us to advertise it on an agenda, however, doesn't mean that the applicant has to send out hearing letters. So anything that changes as recommended, or if it's approved today, they'd have to come back and it initiates a review automatically. Also, Commissioner Coleman, they, condition number ten, they would be allowed to apply for one, uh, sign through a sign permit, which would require approval. And then also, condition eleven, which, um, talks about parking, I did talk with the applicant real quick, to see if they wanted to revise the amount of minimum parking spaces, since they're not looking to use that capacity for another eight years. But, um, it's gonna be less, more economical to do all twenty-two now than later. So staff would stick with the same recommendations as before.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff? Would anybody venture a motion?
I would move that we approve conditional use permit fifteen thirty-five with the thirteen stated conditions.
Second. And note in condition thirteen, um, on the first line, you left off an O. It should be or, instead of R.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve conditional use permit fifteen dash thirty-five with thirteen conditions. The thirteenth condition amended to say that this conditional use permit be reviewed in one year on a complaint basis, or as directed by the Planning Commission and/or Board of Commissioners to verify that all conditions of approval are being met. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Just trying to be a pirate, err, consent.
That would be arg.
County Board Report.
Uh, item number ten, the Board of Commissioners concur with the Planning Commission's recommendation from November twenty-third, Planning Commission meeting.
Yay. Uh, item eleven, are there any items from the public? Nope, looks like most of our public is here, uh, going. Items from staff?
Uh, just a couple, uh, well, three, actually, we'll add, we'll add, see. Building permit report, looks like this time last year, we're up eleven percent. We're at six hundred and one. Building permits is the time the staff report was written, uh, about a week ago. And about five hundred and forty-three this time last year. One thing to note, though, um, the numbers that are on the left and the explanations that are there, like single-family home, mobile homes, those originally came from the Census Bureau years ago. We always tried to figure out why they were the way they were, why they were called what they were called. So staff's done some research, took about two and a half years to get an answer. Apparently, the Census Bureau no longer cares about anything other than one oh one, single-family residence. And all those, the terminology was done by them, but they are no longer tracking that. So staff's talked with, um, staff from Census Bureau that collects this information, and they don't really have a problem if we go through and change some of the terminology, keep the numbers the same, but can change some of those terminologies. So for instance, uh, number six forty-nine on the very bottom, uh, where it says demolition other, those are mobile home demolitions. So it'd be really good just to say demolitions or removal of mobile homes.
Right.
So, and that's just an example. So you'll be seeing that probably over the course of the next few months. So that'll be the biggest change as far as this, uh, building permit reports go. Also, uh, we've continued on with the percentage columns, and if that's not working, we can take those away. If the, if you guys are okay with just keeping the building permit report the way it is, we can do that.
Any comments on that? I do have one question. What's the difference between one oh one and one oh two, single-family homes and attached?
Attached single-family residents, so, uh, includes all, one oh two is all attached single-family residents, like townhomes. Each unit is separate from adjoining units by a wall.
Okay.
Those type of things.
Yeah, but I, I think I asked you at one point, there didn't seem to be a place for apartment houses, as such, you know, I mean.
That would be family buildings, three to four.
Three to four, what does that mean? Three to four families, or?
Before units, yeah.
Units are, if you, I mean, not that we have lots of multi-story-
Right.
You know, developments, but, uh, if that were to take place, it would be.
And right now, the one oh one is the only thing that is really, that we have to report on. So if there, if we wanna put apartment houses separate, create a number for it, we can. Like, it, now, we have that freedom to do that. So if there, if we want to put apartment houses separate, create a number for it, we can. Now, we have that freedom to do that.
Yeah, it would be useful if it were a little less arcane, the language. If attached, single-family homes could be townhomes. Two-family buildings could be duplex. And family buildings could be apartment houses. That would be more useful.
We can develop definitions for those as well.
Any more comments on building report? Okay, zoning ordinance amendments.
Okay, this is just a presentation. Just let you know, we've talked with the Board of Commissioners on December 1st. We just presented what ordinance amendments we want to move forward here. There was no motion made. We just wanted to make sure there was no objection before staff puts a lot of time into this. And so that's what staff's doing now, is just reporting back to the Planning Commission. No in-depth work has really been done. We have ideas of what we want to do, but we're, right now, here's what we're looking at. Section 103, the definition section, what we want to do is basically put the words back into their ordinance sections. So telecommunication facility permits as, section 106 is an example. There is a section in the ordinance for that. There's also a subsection in the definitions for that. And we just want to take that subsection out of the definitions and add it to section 316. So that those definitions for those words exist and mean what they mean in that section only. There will also be a little note in the definition sections for definitions for telecommunication facility, see section 103, 316. So that's what we're going to look to do on that one.
Can I make a comment?
If you'd like.
Please, Laurie. Because I recall several years ago, those definitions were moved to the definition section.
That is correct. That is correct. And staff and public and comment has been things are difficult to find.
Can't find them, okay. All right. So you do have a reason for doing that.
And also because we're looking to redo the zoning ordinance, the structure of it, not only the content of it, to be more like laws and codes where the definition for that word in that section is defined. Correct. Section four, I'm sorry, anything else?
So, so, but aren't there some common terms that would be in all sections that still may, will there be a separate section for those common terms, like easement, for example, might be in several ordinances or something like that?
Yeah, anything that's different than the common, there still will be section 103 definitions that will still be there.
Okay.
We're just taking all the other sections out.
And in that section, like you said, it will, it will tell people to go to this section if you have questions about airports or telecommunications.
Right. And if it doesn't appear in that section as a specific definition, it would be the common definition under 103.
So there might be some terms, however, that occur in different sections of the ordinance, and those terms will be slightly different. The definitions will be slightly different.
Correct.
So at the beginning of the ordinance, the only definitions that will be there are words that have common definition that applies to everything, correct?
That's the goal.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it be simpler just to add that to the section as pertinent to it rather than not even have that first section?
We can look at that as we go forward and research this a little bit. I mean, I know there was good reason to make it the way it is now. Just with the current use and the comments we get back, it's not working.
Yeah, but I'm thinking is, okay, it's common to all of them, but okay, so it's written down five times instead of once. You don't have to go back and forth to find it.
To find, yeah.
Noted.
I agree.
Okay, for the next one. Section 401, the intent section, there's several paragraphs in this, and there's one that deals with developmental lots. And unless you knew it was there, you wouldn't be able to find it, or if you did a Word search on the PDF. So what we want to do is take developmental lots out and make it its own section. That's essentially what that one is. Section 507a5, construction permits. It does not currently take into consideration long-term construction and mining permits. We want to update the language about the permit length and have it be determined on a base-to-base, a case-to-case basis as approved by the Planning Commission instead of expiring in one year. So we're going to look into that one. The mining paragraph, as we call it, because that's all it is, it does not outline expectations for the applicants or criteria for compliance under approval of the mining permit applications by the Planning Commission. So we're just adding some more information, letting know what the expectation is going to be.
I think that's really smart. Always struggled with those.
Section 508 and 510, this is essentially just changing the size of the sign requirement as state law was passed and changed this year. And you saw those signs many, many months ago. 506 and building permits, there's four paragraphs in there. We just want to get, again, just put out what the expectation is from staff to the people who apply for the building permits and the construction permits. And the main thing we want to do is also allow staff to void administratively any building permits that have been going on for a long time, even though staff has repeatedly tried to contact the applicant through phone calls, emails, certified mails. Because we have some permits that are two and a half years old, and staff has to keep going back and double-checking and spending time on, on them. And we just want to be able to come up with a timeframe that after a certain period of time and after staff has done their due diligence, that we can void it without refund. So we can just take it off of our books and off of the shelves where they're collecting dust. Section 511, under fees, right now, building permits can be renewed for $50. If you would interpret it, it could be essentially renewed indefinitely as long as you meet the criteria. However, things change over time, and unless the applicant submits those amendments to the building permits, we don't know. So staff would like, we're going to research and possibly present that there'd be a one-time, one-year extension for building permits. And anything after that, it's just voided without a refund. So they'd have to come back and renew their application. Correct. Section 511, that was the fees. This is a section that Commissioner Farabee had brought up some time ago with the board anchoring. So staff will, reaching out to Commissioner Farabee to come up with what the exceptions are for not needing a building permit. Again, the word anchoring came from the floodplain, flood ordinance because of mobile homes, they have to be anchored down through FEMA, by FEMA regulations. Five, section 511w2, late fees. Right now, signed permits are not in there as far as applying a late fee to that. If someone wanted to, they could put up a sign and come in and get their sign application and not pay a penalty fee. So we just want to add sign fees in there as one of those restrictions. And this is the most difficult one, section 511w3. The word in the ordinance says changes, and it's supposed to be charges, and we just want to change. It's the appropriate word. So that's all what we're opposing, proposing now. There will be considerably more coming in the future.
Okay. Are there any questions for PJ about any of these? I'm assuming that you probably have more than this coming up?
Oh, yeah. We have about 40, just that we have written down right now that we know about.
It's the first batch. We'll see. Okay.
Yep. Take a little chunk of it.
I think this is good. I really do. I like it. I like this. Cleans things up and, yeah. And makes you think a little more clearly about how we present the requirements of planning to the public, yeah.
Staff's at a point now with staffing levels and the experience in the office that we just want to improve it. We know what hasn't been working, there's been the intent to change it, but it hasn't been changed, so we're just attacking it now.
Okay. Anything else from staff?
Nothing further. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I lied. Just a reminder that there is a meeting on December 7th at 1:00 PM. We do currently.
December 21st.
Today is 7th, and there are currently two items on that agenda. Two applicants, I should say.
Are they?
I won't be there for that one.
Jim won't be here? Is everybody else planning to be here? Okay.
Yeah, it's at 1:00 PM on the 21st.
Okay, and you'll send us an agenda?
Just like, just like a regular meeting, correct?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any items for membership?
Yeah, I will miss the January 25th and February 8th meetings.
What are our January meetings?
25th and 11th, right? Second and fourth?
The 11th, did you say?
Yeah, because the fourth is.
11th and 25th.
7th and 25th.
Oh, okay. I'll be here for those.
You will be here?
I will be, yeah.
Anybody else going someplace warm you have to miss? Okay. Any other items from membership? Hearing none, Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, we adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, same sign, we are adjourned.